The Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, June 24th, 2025 at 7:32 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber, which has been duly noticed in two places, including the city's website in accordance with the requirements of RSA 91A. The prayer will be offered this evening by City Clerk Dan Healy and Alderman Dowd will lead us in the pledge to the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
President.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez. Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
I'm here. I'm attending remotely due to travel. I'm alone in this room and I can hear everyone.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fourteen present, one absent.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolt. Mayor, did you wish to address this event this evening?
Yes, Madam President. A few things. First, of course, we've all noticed that it's very hot. We are in the middle of a heat wave and I wanted to remind people that Emily Marticello, the Emergency Management Director, and Bobby Bagley have worked on providing some cooling locations. They include the library, the YMCA, the Senior Center, Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter, the Pheasant Lane Mall, the city pools. And for those who want to enjoy cooler space with their pet on a leash, there is Home Depot, Petco, and Lowe's. So anybody who's suffering from the heat can go to any of those locations during the hottest part of the day. And I want to thank Bobby and Bobby Bagley and Emily Marticello for putting that together. Second, Madam President, I know that we held the Pride Parade, the Pride Celebration, on this past Saturday. It was well attended and I think everybody had a good time. Things went well, no problems. So I don't know, this is our seventh or eighth celebration and I was glad to be part of it. I also wanted to mention, Madam President, something that I saw that was posted by Heather Raymond from the School Department, School Board, and it has to do with a recent survey by Money Inc., which ranks the 30 best high schools in New Hampshire. And the ratings included a look at 93 different high schools. Nashua's North and South finished 14th and 15th on the list. Now, first and second were two private boarding schools. Those are Phillips Exeter Academy and St. Paul's School in Concord. So really among, at least on this, on this survey, among the public high schools, Nashua was really 12th and 13th. And that is significant. I think we, I think people should be aware that we, according to the Department of Education statistics for the, not this year that just finished, but the 23 to 24 academic year, we actually spend significantly less than the average district, average, significantly less per student. We're about $3,000 less than the average district. And with 9,000 pupils, were we to spend the average, that would be another $27 million, which is more than 10% on the tax rate. So, I mean, I'm, I think this underlines the fact that Nashua is spending its money wisely, running things efficiently and effectively. And I think another data point that underlines that is the Wallet Hub survey came out recently regarding the best-run cities in the United States. And again, Nashua's in the top five at, out of 140-some cities, at number five. In the past, we've been two, three, four, you know, we're always in, we've always been in the top five for a whole number of years. And finally, Madam President, I wanted to mention that the Finance Committee approved the development agreement for the NIMCO site, for the development of nearly 300 units of apartments, a mixture of affordable and market-rate units on that site. And an interesting development, and the first step will be to tear down the NIMCO building and that should occur, or should begin late this summer or early in the fall at the developer's cost. And the, an interesting related development is that the same builder developer, LMG, has bought the Bagshaw site across Spine Road and will be, once NIMCO is finished, seeking to develop housing there as well. So it's, it'll be an area where we have a lot of people living and hopefully will help us with the housing crisis that we're all very concerned about. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Great. Remarks to the, responses to the remarks by the mayor. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I was, I was, I don't know, I guess bummed to see the other day that the Bagshaws had moved to Hudson. You know, they've been here, I don't know what, 100 years or so, and it's great that housing's going there, but my biggest concern is we're losing businesses. And Nashua should have business coming in, coming in, and they're going out. And so, great, we'll have, you know, all kinds of housing, which we need, but we also want to balance that with businesses. And I thought we had, at least had Bagshaw down there, because they were, they've been a strong business here for a long time. So I was bummed to see that Hudson ended up getting that business. And then the Pride Parade was excellent. Me and Clerk Healy got to hold the Nashville Pride banner as we walked down the street. It was great to see Alderman Klee and Alderman Lopez there as well, walking with us, and Alderman Klee was in our, the first-year float, I guess they called it. But it was good to have no rain for a change, although it was piping hot. It was a great event. There was tons of people there. Yeah, it was really good. I thought it was well-attended, a lot of food trucks, and I think the community came out strong. So it was, it was a good event, so thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Recognition period.
President's motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alderwoman Kelly.
No, it's fine. I just, I want to just say I was sad to have missed the Nashua Pride. I got to live vicariously through all the Facebook posts, but I was out of state. So thank you for all the colleagues who were able to show up and all of the organizers who worked on it.
Alderman Lopez.
With regards to the Bagshaw Building, I can't speak to all of them, but when we're organizing the block party, the Tree Shoes Block Party, we usually get our T-shirts from Mint Print Works, so they are still in Nashua. So Nashua does still have businesses that are locating and relocating. And I also wanted to comment on how well-organized the Pride Festival was. And I wanted to commend the mayor's staff for all the work that they put in, and then the different city departments that helped as well to make it such a success, because it really was a well-organized event. It was very, very simple to attend, participate, and I think a lot of people had a great time because of logistics, which isn't always recognized.
Recognition period.
None.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of May 27, 2025 be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
None.
Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Paula Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I live in a 15 Westbound drive. I don't know if that library, I'm hearing cha-ching, cha-ching, cha-ching. Last night, I made remarks regarding the end dump truck, that there was no price on, no real information. We can either buy it from Caterpillar, but we don't know the price, or we can get it from John Deere or Volvo. And we're asking to bond $3,275,000 for solid waste for surf purchases. And I said, I think that portion that we don't know about the truck should be left out of the bond. Comment was made that, you know, if we don't use the money for that, it could be put aside or we can use it on something else, basically what it was said. Well, you know, again, when you're going to bond, you're bonding for specific purposes, not to put the money that we're not going to use it, we're going to use it for something else maybe later on. So if you don't have the price of the vehicle, how can you put it in the cost of the bond that you're going to be using for 10 years on vehicles that Alderman Sullivan said depreciates, which is the truth? So you're going to bond it for 10 years, pay an interest rate maybe 4% or maybe higher, maybe less, over a 10-year period. And so, you know, some things just are getting to be ridiculous here. You know, as I go through all of this and I listen to what all the spending's going to be about, it's just getting out of control, cha-ching, cha-ching on a library here, you know? And I keep asking, what's the maintenance plan on everything? There is no maintenance plan, because we keep getting in the hole with the school and the city buildings. But I want to say here, also last night when I was here, I am asking, and I know it's going to pass R-25180, that has to do with the power of professionals. Am I on the right one? Yep, the power of professionals, because I feel that they have been left out all the time that I've been on the board with their raises, and a lot of them work with our special-needs children, and that's a lot of hard work. And also, I'm going to say, and this isn't usually me, I don't vote for contracts usually, Alderman Timmons knows that, and also R-25181, because that's your custodians, and if you don't, we don't keep our plumbers and our electricians in the schools, then we're going to have more problems when we have to outsource that. So that's what I'm asking for. But again, on that bonding, I would think about that, because it's not going to be a big deal if you remove that vehicle that has no cost to it. Excuse me?
It's not on the agenda.
R-25176 is not on the agenda? Well, if it's not on the agenda, then I shouldn't have been able to talk on it.
No, come on. The other's agenda.
Okay.
Communications requiring final approval.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding multi-year contract award Palo Alto.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to accept, place on file, and approve a three-year renewal contract for the continued operation of City of Nashua Palo Alto Renewal with new era in the amount not to exceed $27,106. Funding will be through Department 120 Technology Maintenance Fund, General Fund 54 Property Services by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Petitions.
Petition for amendment to petition for street discontinuance, a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. I would like to grant the petition for an amendment to the petition for street discontinuance, a portion of the Veterans Memorial Parkway by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections.
Appointments by the mayor. Downtown Improvement Committee, Lisa Drift, new appointment, term to expire July 22, 2028, 18 Cushing Avenue, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03064. Conservation Commission, Amanda Griffith, new appointment, term to expire July 22, 2028, 111 Bluestone Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, 03060. Greater Nashua Revolving Loan Fund Committee, David Dearborn, new appointment, term to expire July 22, 2028, 1718 Belmont Street, Manchester, New Hampshire, 03104.
There being no objection, I will accept the appointments as read and refer them to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 19, 2025 Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 21, 2025 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 28, 2025 Joint Meeting, Committee on Infrastructure and the Board of Public Works be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the May 28 Committee on Infrastructure be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of may's appointments.
None.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of R-25-155, amending the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025 relative to the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25155 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 25155 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-157 amended, authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, in home investment partnership program funds for fiscal year 2026.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to, can I amend before we, to recommend, yeah, I'd like to make a motion to amend R-25157 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at Human Affairs Committee by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Motion is to amend. Alderman Lopez.
Just for context, this is part of our typical HUD process where we have to go through the meeting and actually allocate the different funds. So the, we went over it as a committee, presented the different programs and the different designations, but typically, we don't know exactly how much is going to come in before we do it, so then we have to amend it.
Motion is to amend. Alderman Moran.
Madam President, just seeing the list of the charities that are receiving funds through you to Corporation Counsel, myself and Alderwoman Kelly serve on the Soup Kitchen Board. Should we abstain or would there be a conflict?
Are you paid to serve on that board?
No.
No conflict.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is to amend, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
I will abstain. My employer is on the list.
Fourteen yays, zero nays, one abstention.
That motion carries. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to recommend final passage of R-25157 as amended.
Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Abstain.
Thirteen yays, one nay, one abstention.
That motion carries and Resolution 25157 is declared duly adopted as amended.
Second reading of R-25-170 relative to the acceptance of grant funds pursuant to contract amendment number three in the amount of $25,375 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into various public health and community services grant activities.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R-25-170 by roll call.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 25170 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-173 relative to the acceptance of $25,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety 2024 State Homeland Security Grant Program into fire grant activity has mount refresher clause.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage, sorry, of R-25173.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly. Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries and Resolution 25173 is duly adopted.
Second reading of R-25-178 adopting the fiscal year 2026, 2030 Plan Year 2025-2029 Consolidated Plan for U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Community Development Block Grant in Home Investment Partnership Programs.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25178 by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries and Resolution 25178 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Third reading of O-24-034 amended, assigning the Pine Street Extension Parking Lot to Zone 3.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O-24-034 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of amendments made at the Committee on Infrastructure by roll call. Could I speak to it briefly?
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. Thank you. Or maybe not so briefly. But I have a love-hate relationship with this ordinance. And in infrastructure, it was brought up, I think it may be late winter. We tabled it for a while. We came back to it. I, even to this day, I go back and forth on whether or not we should charge for parking. However, in infrastructure, it was originally economic development, and parking came back to us and said, okay, we're going to start on October 1st of this year, and it's going to be Zone 3, which means that you will pay for parking Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Weekends are free. Weeknights after 6:00 p.m. are free. What got me to make the amendment of changing the date from October 1st to January 1st of 2026, that's the first change that you're going to see in the Goldenrod copy, so from October to January. We also discussed a sunsetting date on this. And the reason for the sunsetting is there is going to be a lot of changes that go on in the Mill Yard. The Nimco property, now the Bagshaw property, has been bought, probably for housing. There could be, that entire piece of land could look different in 18 months. So, we put forth a sunset date on here to discuss it. Gives it three full years of analysis to find out, are we truly getting $200,000 out of the parking lot per year, et cetera? What got me finally interested in this is that I was told at infrastructure that we would pave this lot, and that we would add lighting to that lot. And I'm very familiar with that parking lot. There is standing water in that parking lot consistently, and it is not well-lit for some of the businesses there. So, given that, I came around on it, and I said, okay, but I'd like to make these changes. We worked it out. We went back and forth a little bit. We came up with these amendments. So that's where I am. So I'd like to make a motion to amend it, please.
Motion is to amend. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I will support the amendment, but probably am not going to support the legislation, and I will speak to that after the vote on the amendment.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, with the clerk please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavia.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Klee.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Sullivan.
I would like to make a motion for final passage of O-24-034 as amended by roll call.
You've heard the motion. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I have made it known publicly and at several meetings that I am against moving our parking zone that far out of the downtown. I understand that this is an area where we want to, you know, we're building housing. Hopefully, there'll be more of that there. But, to me, it's a slippery slope down a course of, well, if we add it here, what's next? Holman Stadium? And then what? Lincoln Park, maybe? Because that's the other entrance, big entrance to Mines Falls. I can't support doing this because of that. I think if we do this, we get, we send the signal that this is something we can look into in other areas to start charging for parking. And I've heard the argument that, well, you know, we have to pave the lot. We have to plow the lot. We have to maintain the lot. And that's true. But that's true of every single city street that's in Nashua. We don't charge to park on every single street in Nashua. And yet, the plow comes by. And yet, when there's potholes, they get fixed. And yet, when the street finally needs repaving, they get paved. And we don't ask residents to pay to park there on every single street. But yet, all of those things continue to happen. And they can continue to happen here in this lot, too, without being paid to park. My other concern with this is we are supposed to have, in that area, a project that is going to have very low-income housing. And other low-income housing, which will have one, we learned the other night, will have one parking space per resident, but not necessarily two. So if we begin to start charging to park over here, we're making residents who already have a hard time paying for things have to pay for parking. Now, again, where it has historically been, I don't have a problem with that within the downtown area. I think, to some degree, you know, you can argue that there's a return on investment in there in that, you know, some of that money goes back to investment into the downtown. And it promotes turnover for businesses that are there. But this is, to me, going to directly impact the businesses that are there and the new residents who are moving in, in a negative way. And so while I appreciate the sunset clause, I appreciate that the trial run on this. At the end of the day, we don't ask for people to pay to park outside of downtown. I don't think we should start doing it. I think it's a bad precedent, and I cannot support this legislation.
Further discussion. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, so I was not going to support this either. Although Alderman Clemmons did point out the differentiation between supporting the amendment and making it slightly better, thanks to the work that the committee has done, versus endorsing the idea overall. I think putting paid parking in that area is very problematic because of the businesses and organizations that operate out of the area. Some of those might include Hartz and Greater National Mental Health's Emergency Supports Programs. And while there is parking attached to the buildings that they're renting from, it's not necessarily adequate parking. And I think, to me, I want to steer clear of any sort of structural or administrative efforts to gentrify an area in advance of housing moving in. So, asking them to pay for even three years might be enough to drive some of those programs out because, you know, the decision has been made that that area has different economic value. And I'm pretty sensitive to that because one of the developers, when they were, not the current developers of the project, but one of the initial plan designers, when we were first collecting information about what we wanted to do with the Nimco, how we wanted to do the RFP, said the quiet part out loud. And he said, this area is too nice for low-income. You should save it for upper income. And I was like, I would not like to choose, based on people's income, what parts of the city they can access and what parts they can be part of. And I think this is part of that, too. I think adding parking, even if it is just during the day, when those businesses are operating, will create a problem for some of those businesses. And their businesses are city needs. Even if it doesn't necessarily prefer to have them all operating downtown, shoulder-to-shoulder with other businesses, they're still very much needed. And I think, overall, we have to look at the whole city, not just specific goals. I definitely support the parking department's desire to become, to generate more revenue and to be able to maintain its parking facilities. But I don't, I think moving into neighborhoods in the way that they're doing, expanding the parking, raising the prices, doing this all in rapid step is putting a hardship on people who actually live in the area.
Next, I have Alderman Gavia.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise tonight in opposition of the proposed resolution before us, or ordinance, rather. And I think my colleague-at-large kind of hit the nail on the head on this whole issue. And in my opinion, at the end of the day, all we're doing here is dissentivizing the use of these nonprofits in that area. The businesses down there in that park entrance. If I'm looking to go to the park, or Mines Falls, and walk around, I'm not going to go to the entrance where I have to pay to park. I'm either going to go up to probably my ward, Lincoln Park, and get it from there. And that was the, kind of the argument I brought forth at one of the earlier meetings was, what's next? Are we going to charge at Lincoln Park? Are we going to have an influx of cars now at Lincoln Park? I already do deal with a lot of comments about parking when it's really busy and we're using all the ball fields there of where to park and the on-street parking. So I just feel that we shouldn't be charging this area. It's just a little too far out of downtown. I do appreciate the work by the parking department and wanting to generate more revenue. I just don't feel that this is the right way to do it. So I will not be supporting it, but obviously supported the amendment as it does, I think, make this ordinance a little bit better. Thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I am really twixt and tween on this. I think a lot of people really misunderstand this completely. I mean, you aimed at the target, but it went out into some other field. The thing is this, we already maintained this property. It was offered to the previous owner of the building, and he didn't want it. So now, we're responsible for fixing the potholes, which there are a few. The people who park there at a commercial, this ain't residential. I don't know how residential get involved with this, but it's a commercial property. And, so they go to the work, just like the people down on Main Street. What are you going to do for them? They pay for parking spaces. They work in all the stores. You know, this is a fair and equitable thing. If people go to that, and if you go to use one of the nonprofits or something like that, pay the meter. It's Zone 3, which is a lower rate than it is down on Main Street. It's not the same rate. But, in the meantime, this amendment, it was supposed to start in October. I don't know how we're going to put lights up. I don't know how we're going to put a kiosk in for the charging of it in January. And as far as sunsetting, wake up, people. We can sunset every single ordinance that we create. We don't have to attach a sunset. We're capable of it, you know? So this amendment unfortunately tried to do too many things. But to compare it with the residential and the parking, man, you're in deep water. You're diving too deep. This was only meant for the commercial property that we're already taking care of. We're plowing it and everything else. So, it's fair. So the question can be asked, why do the people of this residence get free parking? Yet, our friends in commercial people on Main Street, we charge them. Are we fair and equitable? Thank you.
Next, I have Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I know of at least two of the charities there, except Medicaid, for the services that they render. And I'll be damned if I'm going to levy a tax against a Medicaid provider who's facing federal and state cuts at the time when they need providers who can't even, paraprofessionals who can't even afford, on the salary that they're given, to actually pay for parking. We're a place they've worked for years and risk losing their jobs because they can't make it into work because they can't feed the meter, or they'll get tickets and won't be able to renew their registration. Because that's the reality of the working-class people that are helping the homeless and the mentally ill in those two locations. They're not paid hundreds of thousands of dollars. They're paid 15 bucks an hour, maybe a little bit more. And paying a few extra dollars a day on a meter is a lot, or to rent a space. And I can't believe that a city like this would propose doing something like that to the nonprofit community that are facing such Medicaid cuts. Because we're not the house, we're not the state house. We're not, we shouldn't kneecap these people. And we certainly shouldn't make it worse. So I'll be voting no.
Alderwoman Klee.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm quite confused with some of the comments and so on. I think Director Hanam is here. When we had testimony at the time, I'm confused. I thought that the conversation was that she had spoken to the people that had, were there, and that they were okay with this. They had parking alongside the building. They didn't have issues with this, and that this was not going to become a problem. Am I mistaken with that? And that they were not going to be paying for parking, and so on? So there were not going to be a tax levied to them, and so on.
Right. Liz Hanam, Economic Development Director. That's correct. We did speak with most of the businesses that are in those two buildings. Many of the nonprofits specifically had their own private parking, for their employees, at least. It was, they're probably not adequate parking for all of their customers as well that would be in the parking lot. But, most of the private businesses were in favor or didn't mind charging for parking. They really wanted better, safer parking. That was their comment to us is, we need more adequate lighting, was the number-one thing. So, we did speak with all of them, and they just wanted a date for when it would start.
Okay, may I?
Alderman Klee.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad to hear that. And comments relative to the residents being able to park there, this is not going to be any different than other surface parking lots where people can just park regularly. So I'm not quite sure. If that's the case, then all those apartments that are being built, why would they want to purchase or pay for parking in these new complexes? Why wouldn't they just say, we're all going to park in all these free lots? Why would they bother purchasing the parking lots of these new places, whether they're low-income or not? So, I mean, I'm looking at, I'm looking at that. If there's, if this new building that's going up is going to have X amount of parking spaces, why am I going to pay for parking in that building when I have this free lot over there? I'm just going to take all those free parking spaces, if that's the case. And I'm not saying that they're going to do that. I'm just kind of throwing that out there. I am having a difficult time with this. I'm just kind of throwing these comments out there. And trust me, I do have a difficult time with this. Myself and Alderman Sullivan kind of negotiated these three years of, do we start in October? Do we start in January? He was very accommodating and wanting to sunset it in 2027. I asked if he would go an extra year so that we could get more data to try to figure it out whether or not this was going to work. Mostly because I said this board takes, whether it's this board or the next board, takes a long time for us to make a decision and so on. But I really think three years kind of gives us feeling. And if the next board says, hey, you know what, we're just gonna not do anything, it goes away. I don't think, it's a bad thing. I think it's something worth looking at. The money that can be generated from it might be enough money to actually fix the entire parking lot, put lighting in, do whatever. I don't think it's a bad thing. If they do nothing, it goes away in three years. I don't see the harm in it. And I do see everybody's point. But there is parking that is available, that's free to these businesses, so. But I do respect everybody's opinion. Truthfully, I do. So, thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Oh, I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay, all right. Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, the more I think about the amendment, I would have changed my vote probably, because Alderman O'Brien made a good point. We can sunset this thing anytime we wanted to, any board can. So why put a timer on it? But I voted yes because I knew it wasn't gonna change how I was voting. I'm not gonna support it. I'm surprised it came out of committee. With all the stuff going on down there, and now we got another site that's being altered, why don't we just let things play out and then reassess it after these people build the new, whatever they're building, apartment buildings, businesses, whatever? Then see what we got, and then say, okay, now we need to reassess this area. Maybe they'll help doing some things. Maybe they'll build more parking. I don't know what they're gonna do. We don't know what the people that are going to do with the Bagshaw Building. So I say we just let it go for now, and we'll reassess when those developers make a decision. So I'm not supporting this tonight.
Alderman Clemmons, next.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to put some context on some of, one of the things that was said, and that's, why would we charge businesses downtown for parking? You know, why would we charge the people who work downtown for parking versus this area? And the difference is, we have, people have been paying for parking downtown Nashua for longer than I've been alive. They've never paid for parking over here, ever. And I just don't think that it's right to all of a sudden do that outside of the downtown. And I just wanted to make that point, because it's not a matter of fairness. If you're a new business and you're coming to locate downtown Nashua, you know where there's parking, and you know, or paid parking, you know where it is. And you know it's something that you're gonna have to deal with. And you either make a decision that it's worthwhile, and it's in your business plan, and it works for you, or you choose to go somewhere else where there isn't paid parking. And right now, these businesses have chosen to go over here where their patrons don't have to pay to park, they don't have to pay to park. And that's a business decision that they've made. And we shouldn't be going in and messing around with that, as far as I'm concerned. And so I just wanted to get that on the table.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Most of my colleagues have really made the points that I'd like to make. But, you know, the question was asked how we got on the residential point. Well, that came up in the discussion, infrastructure. Part of the reason that this is even being proposed is because we're seeing a lot of residential development being planned for the Mill Yard. And we want to sort of get out ahead of that before any new residents moving in maybe considering parking here for free. So that's there. Another issue that I'm having, I listened to this discussion, and I listened to it again, and then I actually listened to it again just a couple hours ago. And the thing that I really hate about these ordinances or resolutions that get tabled and then sit on the table for six to eight months and don't get any substantial change made during that time is that a lot of the nuance of the discussion gets lost. And one of the words that stuck out to me that contrasts with what we've heard just tonight is we've heard that, well, most of the business owners are okay with it over there. They're okay with paying for parking or taking on this additional burden. Whereas just a couple of hours ago, I heard the same speaker say the word resigned. Resigned to it and being okay with it, to me, are two different instances entirely. And that's what I don't like. Again, I wonder why this even came out of committee with such minimal change. I mean, I think the amendment is perfectly valid, because we did sit on this for so long. And now we're looking to jump on it in four months, which is half the time that it sat on the table. But for me, this really comes down to the point that my colleague from Ward One made, which is access to the park. There's various access points to Mine Falls Park with parking at no charge. Lincoln Park is one of them, Whipple Street is one of them, this is one of them. A trail terminates right into this parking lot, take it rather often. And the wheels in my head start turning. If we're gonna charge for this access point to Mine Falls, then why not charge at Lincoln Park? Then why not charge at Whipple Street? Which is not even something I want to consider. So I've been opposed to this since it first came up, and I'm gonna oppose it tonight.
Do you mind if I clarify, Director Hanam?
I was gonna suggest, may we recognize her?
Sure. Yeah, Liz Hanam, Economic Development. I just wanna kind of put to bed the slippery slope concept. This came from the downtown parking study. That's the only reason why this is moving forward, is because it was recommended by extensive two-year study of this area. So there is no plan to go outside of the downtown. And we did include the Mill Yard was in the part of the downtown that this scope study made recommendations for. So I just want to clarify for the public that there is no plans to go outside of the downtown.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to reiterate that, while I want to state that I spoke directly to the CEO of the Mental Health Center regarding the burdens of the parking for their clientele at that space. And there was also conversation about how it's been a deterrent to their downtown location over time. But ultimately, that space that's there, at the Pine Street Extension, holds their psychiatric emergency service center and mobile crisis center. I find it immoral to charge a nickel for someone who wants to go in and pull in having suicidal thoughts to get treatment. They shouldn't have, them or their loved ones who are bringing someone in for emergency psychiatric care shouldn't have to be burdened with paid a park by the city of Nashua. And that's why, again, I'm voting no.
Alderman Judd.
So I have a different view, I guess. I don't understand, you know, why any of us would think that the taxpayers should be providing free parking in this area for, you know, a commercial area. You know, these businesses, you know, you can talk about a particular business that you make a very compelling argument. But, you know, those patients, the clients of those businesses, the employees of those businesses, you know, if those, you know, those businesses can provide parking for them, those businesses can pay for the parking. There are businesses in that area that are strictly commercial. They don't have the heartthrobbing aspect of it that you mentioned about the one that you're talking about. You know, the landlord that owns those properties has been there for a long time. He's owned those properties for a long time. He has been renting out spaces to those people and has been unwilling to provide parking to them. He's let the city provide the parking lot. And those people, those same people are complaining about, oh, there's potholes in the parking lot. It's not lit properly. So, you know, I have to wonder why the rest of the city's taxpayers should be paying to repave that lot, to put up lights, to provide a safe place for the patients, the customers, the employees of businesses in that area. It's the businesses that ought to be paying for the parking. If their customers can't afford it, if their employees can't afford it, it's up to the businesses to pay for it, I think. And to say that, you know, I mean, I make a distinction between this place. To say that this is not part of downtown is a surprise to me. You know, this end of Clock Tower is not in downtown, but the other end is? I mean, it's all, it's all part of downtown. It's all within walking distance. And it's becoming more and more, you know, a solid part of downtown. You know, the housing is being extended, you know, restaurants, businesses are all extending into this area. So, you know, this is different than, you know, Lincoln Park or the Colosseum entrance to Mine Falls, or the Whipple Street entrance, you know, or the Stello Stadium area, entrance to the parking lot. Those areas are not surrounded by businesses like this one is. You know, this is, you know, and this is not coming out of the blue, as was pointed out. It's the result of the parking study, that we hired this expert to advise us. And this is one of the recommendations that he and the committee is following. So, you know, I'm very much in favor of our rectifying what I think is inequity, and that is that the rest of the city is providing free parking for this particular area. You know, the people that use the parking lot ought to be paying for the parking. People who use the garage ought to pay to park in the garage. The people that use this parking lot should pay to park there. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Alderman Dow.
Yeah, just all valid points that people made. One of the key things that everybody mentioned is that the lot's in terrible shape, needs to be paved. Terrible lighting, which is detrimental to the people that use the parking lot, especially from a safety standpoint. So if we vote this down, this same group will have to come up with the money to pave and put the lights in, because the only plan the city has at the moment to pave and put lights in is based on the income coming in from the parking. So as Budget Chair, I just want to point out that it'll be supplemental if we want to do the paving and do the lights. Somebody's gonna pay for it, so we'll have some kind of legislation come in that covers that cost. So that's a cost that the city, entire city, will have to bear. So just keep that in mind as you're thinking about this legislation.
Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, so with regards to the parking study consultant, I remember in one of the meetings where he said, we make a lot of recommendations to cities. They don't always follow them. In fact, usually they don't. So I was amused by that comment particularly, because I was like, well, apparently we take what they say as complete gospel. I kind of took a dim view of their assessment of, over the river, where they identified an area along Franklin and Winter, and said, this is all the available parking, and then immediately identified a bunch of private parking that was not available to the public. So I don't think they're without worth review. And I think the whole point of us as a board is to double-check their math and maybe take the neighborhood's perspective. And I guess some people would argue that because the residents aren't moved in there yet, it's not a neighborhood, and the businesses, some of them have been there for upwards of 10 years, aren't neighborly or don't have any particular insight. But I do know that, again, I've spoken directly to a number of them, and they have not been enthusiastic about this or willing. At most, maybe resigned is the right word for it. But I think if you're engaged by a city staff member and saying, all right, so do you want lights and repaving, and you want the thing maintained or not? And then they want, obviously, a better parking lot, they want lights, they want safety. They're not gonna say no. That's not the same thing as saying, well, I'm sure all of our clients or customers can afford to pay, you know, by the hour to be there. And I mentioned too, I could also mention the mosque and the church. They don't really charge a lot too. But as some simply look at every business as equal and the same, not all of these businesses have deep pockets. You know, they're not lawyers making extra money off of cases or that kind of stuff. They may be moving month to month trying to maintain, you know, their operations, especially in a climate where a lot of federal funding and a lot of state funding is being redirected elsewhere. I don't see why we need to contribute to that as a city. We have to just make it harder for them and pass, you know, more taxes on. People say, well, I don't know why the Nashua taxpayers would have to pay for that. That's insulting, because a lot of people who work at those businesses are Nashua taxpayers. A lot of people who patronize those businesses are Nashua taxpayers. And for some reason, when it comes to the denser neighborhoods, the lower-income neighborhoods, they get to pay twice. They get to pay their taxes, they get to pay their property taxes or pay their landlord's property taxes, and they get to pay for parking during the day when they need it to do things. You know, there's an increasing amount of tax if you happen to have teenagers who drive. So I think it's not fair to just simplify that by saying, well, they're asking for more. This was not there before. And I can point to right across the river from there, or I guess the canal, to where we built Monahan Manor, and the neighborhoods around are completely saturated with extra parking needs and extra people trying to find places to park, because they can't afford to use every metered spot that's in the area, and because they have more than one car per unit. So when these housing programs go in, yes, some of them may actually benefit from having available parking nearby. Or I guess we could milk them and say, all right, well, we put low-income housing or affordable housing in there, but we didn't necessarily leave extra parking. So it's the landlord's responsibility. If they don't, then you could just rent from the city. The parking isn't gonna be overnight, so that's better than nothing. But, and that's why I think the amendment isn't terrible. But I do think it will create a hardship for people who are moving in there, because it almost immediately did so for Monahan Manor. And to the arguments that, well, we're doing this to downtown, so let's be fair, it wasn't fair to do it to downtown. We put a bunch of parking meters in over by the library annex, and it created not only a major problem for one of the businesses that were in there, well, two of them if you want to count the American Legion, but it also started turning the neighbors against each other. And neighbors who formerly had sort of gentleman's agreements about, you can use my lot, you can use my lot, started flaming each other. So that didn't go over well. And there was a lot of public outcry when we raised the parking rates in the parking garages. And I think there was a lot of confusion when we changed what the rules were for each one. And yes, that reform needed to happen, and I dug my feet in as long as I could before actually, you know, getting on board with it. But I don't think we need to change everything about every single area at the same time and give nobody any alternatives to what they're gonna do with their car and how they're gonna transport themselves. If people think you don't need a car for downtown and you can park over in Pine Street Extension to get to the downtown, be my guest. Park there tonight, walk over to Main Street, and tell me how that goes for you. Because, I mean, this is a hot day. You could do that on a snowy day, too. There's a lot of housing and people who live in between those places, because there is a difference between downtown, as we understand, as a commercial entity, and downtown as a region. And if we're gonna say, okay, well, I mean, that area is definitely downtown, and Pine Street Extension is just as downtown as Main Street, then Alderman Clemmons is 100% right that we're setting the precedent, regardless of whether we currently have a study or not. This will be pointed at, and people will start redefining downtown as anywhere we think we can charge extra money. So I'm still opposed to it. I think a lot of the points that were made here are more in favor of advocating for the issue and less in favor of looking at what's actually happening in the area and what the needs are.
Alderman Cleese.
I agree with everything my colleague just said, even though, you know, I'm not opposed to this ordinance, but I do agree with everything that he just said. But I also do want to clarify that as far as zoning, per se, that area is considered downtown. It is considered downtown because that building that was built is not required to have any parking. So as far as the zoning is concerned, there was no requirement to have parking when they built those apartments, because it's considered the downtown high-density area. And therefore, no parking was required. We required that they put parking into that building.
As a point of clarification, can I ask, are you talking about the buildings going in? They want a NIMCO?
The NIMCO building that was being put in there, there was no requirement for that, because it's considered a downtown area. But I also agree with everything that you just said, Alderman Lopez. So I just wanted to clarify that. And that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I, again, I'm going to say this. I'll sponsor legislation to fix up that parking lot and put lights in there without people having to pay to park there. We do that. I mean, Lincoln Park, right? That's a lighted field. Holman Stadium, that's lighted. People don't charge, we don't charge people to park there. We don't charge, just because there's businesses in an area, we don't charge people to drive down the Danny Webster Highway. We don't say, hey, you know what, we're gonna put a toll booth up here. You gotta get your EZ Pass to come down the Danny Webster Highway. Why is that? Oh, because there's businesses. We don't do it. Why would we do it here? Just because there's businesses in an area doesn't necessarily mean that all of a sudden now you have to, people have to pay to park. And just because there isn't, anyway. Some of the points that are being made here, again, I generally genuinely disagree with. I don't think that you have to, that the only way that this parking lot gets paved and the only way that lights get in there is if we charge for parking. I mean, that's ludicrous. Think about that. Think about how many city parking lots there are. The schools, at the fire department, at, you know, the various ballparks and things like that, different parks. We're gonna start charging parking? Well, if we want to make an upgrade, you know, we better start charging for parking. This is ridiculous. It's a slippery slope, and I understand that it comes from the parking study. But it's a slippery slope regardless.
Alderman Sullivan.
I said early on that I had a love-hate relationship with this ordinance. I want to thank all my colleagues for reminding me of why I don't like it. I'll be voting no. That's it.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. And, you know, going to some comments that were said earlier about this model of, well, the people who park and use businesses in this area should pay for the upkeep of this lot. I just have a big objection with is somebody who has in their ward chair and ab in a parking lot that is looking over the airport, next to a car wash and a pizza place and some businesses across the street. Am I now gonna pay people to sit there and watch airplanes on a Sunday morning? Or when they stop in to get a hot dog? Is that the only way we're gonna be able to fix up that parking lot? No, I don't think so. I'm all set. Thank you.
I'm always there. Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Before we get too silly, can we move a motion on this to vote, please?
Motion is to move the question. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Judd.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
14 yays, one nay.
That motion carries. Motion before us is for final passage as amended. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
No.
3 yeas, 12 nays.
That motion fails. And ordinance 23, 2434.
Someone should vote indefinitely postpone.
Alderman Lopez.
Can I make a motion indefinitely postpone?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion indefinitely postpone.
Motion is to indefinitely postpone. The clerk call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
11 yeas, 4 nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance 2434 is indefinitely postponed. New business resolutions.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Sullivan.
Just a point of order, please. I wanted to address, thank you first of all, for R-25-121, also known as the tax cap legislation. I know this has been on our agenda for a few meetings, and I was just curious to find out where this sat, if we needed to re-refer it back to committee, should we indefinitely postpone it? I just was curious to know where this is going, if anybody has any thoughts on that.
Anyone can answer that? Sure.
I think you should put it on the ballot. I mean, the thing, the system we have now as fashioned by the courts and the legislature is not working at all. I mean, I think we can all agree on that. Why not let the voters have a shot at it?
And I agree, but it seems to be, if I may, stuck in neutral. I just, I'm trying to figure out what we need to do next with it because it's been here. We made some amendments many months ago. It seemed to have some momentum, and then it just stopped, and it's been parked here, and I, I'm just at a loss as far as where we go. Should I make a motion to re-refer it?
You can make any motion you want.
I would like to make a motion to re-refer R-25-121 back to committee.
I think we have to take it off the table first.
What? I thought it wasn't committee. Oh, it's table here? Oh, so I'd like to make a motion to take it off the table.
You've heard the motion. Alderman Clemmons.
Might I suggest to the maker of the motion that he amended to say, "Take it off the table and move it to wherever, to the committee," so that we can do this in one fell swoop?
Oh, I like that.
You want to amend your motion, Alderman Sullivan?
I would like to amend my motion.
Okay.
To take this off the table and re-refer it to committee, please.
And what committee was this in?
Personnel.
Personnel. Okay, you've heard the motion. Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I had a, now that it's been clarified which committee it would be going to, I had a, I guess, a question and a point is, as I understand it, personnel is not going to be meeting for some time. We're at the end of June, let's call it July. We're four months out from the election. Do we even have a clear enough timetable to be able to put this through all the motions it needs to do to get to that ballot question in November?
Why don't we have a personnel meeting?
Our chair's out of town.
Well, we have a vice chair for that reason. Who's the vice chair? Alderman Clemmons.
Madam President, I am the vice chair. I am not available for the regularly scheduled meeting. However, I could do, I would be happy to chair a special meeting some other time in the month.
Okay, so it's not like we can't have a meeting, we just got to get the right people at the table to make it happen. Alderman Senate?
I guess just as a follow-up to that, same question, maybe through you to Clerk Healy. Do we have the time to schedule that meeting, re-refer it? I don't know if it would need another public hearing, and then send it to the state, hope it passes muster, and then get it on the ballot in time for November?
So back to me, it would need to be at my office, all done with the state portion, sending it out by September 5th, I believe, to get it on the ballots. That's about 60 days prior to the election, and that's around the timeframe that I would be sending the ballots to be printed. But by our say, I believe it's 60 days prior, which would be that September 5th. So as long as it's prior to that date, we shouldn't have any issue getting it on the ballot.
Y'all set, Alderman Senate?
For now.
Alderman Gavea.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I suggest that we keep it here and have a special BOA meeting? Like, we've done this in the past where instead of putting something in a committee, we've hashed it out here. We don't have to worry about going to a committee, having a quorum of a committee, sending it back to the Board of Aldermen, and we've been able to get stuff done that way. That way, if we hashed it out, all of us here, or as many that could make it on that night, we would be able to directly send something, and you could take a vote on it that night, I would imagine. No, you'd have to have a hearing, right?
You have to have a public hearing.
Public hearing, yep.
Before you take final action at the Board of Aldermen. You've already amended it sufficiently to trigger the necessity of another public hearing. Now, the last time you met on this, there were a number of suggestions, and I have notes on those, and my understanding was I was supposed to incorporate those suggestions into a further draft, and when you next had a meeting to consider it, distribute that, and it was open season again.
Alderman Sullivan.
Well, thank you. I was going to offer that that was the last meeting that we actually did have. It was a special BOA. It wasn't a specific committee. That's kind of where this ended. So if we need to have it back by September 5th, we better get moving.
We better. Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, I guess I would defer to what my colleague from Ward 1 had said, and I would prefer the special full board meeting as opposed to having it go to committee. And it's not because I, I don't care, it can go to committee, but the mechanics of it, I think, are better.
I have no problem holding a special Board of Aldermen meeting to discuss this. Alderman Sullivan?
I was going to amend my motion to take it off the table and refer it to a special Board of Aldermen meeting to be held at a date later.
Determined by the president?
Yes.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to request that we not choose the week of the 17th in August. I don't think it's going to go well.
We have something special going on that week?
Yeah, I don't want to try calling in for my wedding. It's going to be bad.
Well, I will also be out of the country that week, so that doesn't work for me either, so.
What are you doing on July 4th? Maybe that's a...
Celebrating with veterans.
Okay.
But there's time.
We can schedule something. We need to vote on that. The motion was, you heard Alderman Sullivan's motion to take it off the table and refer it to a special meeting of the Board of Aldermen.
Yeah.
Further discussion on that, Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, just for clarification, we have the special Board of Aldermen meeting, and we determine what all the amendments are and the language. And as I understand it from Corporation Council, it will then need a public hearing and then come back to the full board for action before it can go to den.
Any further discussion? Alderman Clemmons.
Yeah, so we may have to buckle up for some special meetings. This may not be the only one, right?
Hey, you've heard the motion. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gavea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Every meeting is special to me, yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
13 yeas, 2 nays.
That motion carries. Okay, new business resolutions.
First reading of R-25-182, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended federal aid program project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for an expanded Walnut Street Oval Intersection Project and to accept and appropriate an additional $1,174,476.74 for the project.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee of the Board of Public Works and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, July 28th at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-183, authorizing the mayor to enter in a federal aid program project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of designing a new pedestrian bridge over the Nashville River and to accept and appropriate $500,000 for the project.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Cle, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, July 28th at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of R-25-184, relative to the supplemental appropriation of $25,618 of fiscal year 2025 unanticipated drivers' education revenue into special revenue fund number 2201, Drivers Education Fund.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, July 28th at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the first reading of ordinance O-2559 that was submitted after the agenda was prepared.
First reading of O-25-059, amending the beer and wine samples at farmers' markets.
Alderman Lopez.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow for a second reading of O-25059 by roll call. I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Lopez.
So I apologize for being a wrecking ball into our legislative process, but I found out about this on Sunday. The farmers' market in downtown has been struggling to organize because of recent changes in great American downtown, but they pulled off the incredible and managed to get the vendors that they needed to have a farmers' market. But, and their opening day on Sunday is a little bit sparse, and when I talked to the director, one of the issues was one of the very first vendor who signed up typically sells spirits, and that is not something that we were 100% comfortable authorizing at the city clerk's department level. I would like to invite City Clerk Healy to correct or, you know, introduce anything I'm getting wrong here. But basically, legislatively, I had asked President Wilshire if we could bring this in as quickly as possible because if we are able to approve this tonight, then that means that a vendor would potentially be able to start contributing to the farmers' market. If we do our typical process where we introduce it, even with bringing it in under suspension, referring to committee, it would take a couple of weeks. Some committees aren't meeting regularly because of the summer, and by the time we made the decision, it would be too late. But as I understand it, this is kind of a nuance. It's allowed for by state law. We did it last year, so we need to clean this up so that the city is comfortable with the permitting process. City Clerk Healy, did I get that right?
Yes, that's pretty accurate. So we did permit this last year, not realizing that it was spirits. The ordinance says beer and wine, so we had sent it out to other departments, and we had signed off on it. It says the governing body, so with the sign-off, our office would feel more comfortable with it actually being in the ordinance, and then when the application comes into us, we can do our normal process where it involves any alcohol sales. We send it to a few city departments. If there's no objections, then we basically sign off on it. So we did, as you mentioned, we did sign off on it last year, not realizing that it was spirits, but to be on the safer side, even with the state law, I think it would be beneficial to actually include it in the ordinance under farmers' market where it says beer, wine, and then adding the liquor aspect.
All set. Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. So I have no issue, no quarrels with this at all. I think it's a good thing. But I saw a typo in here that I want to correct, so I'm going to make a motion to amend. And it's in the new, it's in the new underlined portion where it says, it currently reads "one-half ounce sample per label per person," and I believe it should read "one-half ounce sample of liquor per label per person." And so that's my amendment. And if you read the rest of the ordinance, that's how it reads, like, for example, for wine or for the beer, cider. So again, the amendment is to change the underlined sentence to "one-half ounce sample of liquor per label per person."
You've heard the amendment. Alderman Cle.
To the maker of the motion, the next, the next part of that says, one, that's already in there, it says "one-two ounce sample per label."
For wine. For any wine.
Oh, for any wine. So you're saying that this should read, so it should read "one-half ounce sample per label per person"? Okay, I'm sorry, could you reread?
Yep.
Yes.
If I could.
Yes.
Madam President.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Add the words "for liquor" after the word "person."
Okay.
Well...
For... So "one-half ounce sample per label per person for liquor."
Okay, I will make the amendment state that.
Okay. Alderman Moran.
This is a bit coy. Why do we set it on a half ounce? Could it be more than that, or is there blue laws I'm not aware of?
That's right out of the state statute.
Yeah, okay.
For us to do any more than that, we would be encouraging these people to do things that they could go to jail for.
Got it. That's unfortunate.
Did we vote on suspending the rules for the second reading? Yeah, we did. We did, right? Yeah, okay. Alderman O'Brien, did you have something, Ken?
No, I'm all set.
Okay. Alderman Thibodeau.
Just for clarity, so everything being underlined is being added or proposed to be added. So we're adding samples of beer, liquor, and wine, but then nowhere else is liquor mentioned? So you cannot give a sample of liquor?
No.
Alderman Clemmons?
We're only adding liquor. The only change is to add liquor.
Yep. Make it clear they can have a sample of liquor or wine. We're adding liquor.
You just add liquor right here.
We're missing...
For liquor.
Yeah.
Doesn't say that.
Got it?
There you go.
I'd like to apologize to the board for bringing this last minute like this. I just wanted to miss a week if they didn't have to.
I'm good.
Okay. The motion is to amend. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries. Alderman Clemmons, I mean Alderman Lopez, sorry.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O-25059 as amended.
By roll call.
By roll call.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Ordinance 2559 is declared duly adopted as amended. Period for general public comments. And one person signed up, Paula Johnson.
Good evening, Paula Johnson again, 15 Westborne Drive. First of all, I'd like to thank Alderman Cle and Alderman Wilshire on letting me talk about something that was not on the agenda, but as you can see, I have all white papers here and I got them all mixed up. I should have had the golden rod copy or the yellow paper so I could differentiate between last night's meeting and tonight's meeting, but thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to say, you know, when you were talking about O-24034, I mean, that just went on forever, but when it comes to spending millions of dollars, we just go right through it quickly. You know, that was always a joke, you know, and I think it still stands here, you know. Parking takes forever, but spending millions doesn't. I was making a little bit of notes, and I don't know how I would have voted on that. That was a tough issue, but I will say, I made notes words of wisdom by Alderman Jettie, you know. What he was saying made a lot of sense, a lot of common sense here on what he was speaking about. It's a hard thing to decide who's going to pay and who's not going to pay, but you know, whether you live downtown or you live on the other side of the city, you know, money going into the meters, going into the meter as a taxpayer. It doesn't matter on which end of the city you live in, because people who live down on the west side of the city, out towards Pebble and Hollis, some people can't afford their taxes, just like people downtown. So we really got to take a look and say, we can't differentiate and say just one section. We have a lot of senior citizens out there that are having a hard time struggling paying their taxes. But anyway, I want to say thank you. Did a great job on that discussion regarding paying money in a parking meter for downtown, and we just whisked right through millions of dollars. Have a good night.
Remarks by members of the board. I'll start over here tonight. Alderman O'Brien.
What are we on here? Committee announcements?
No, remarks by members.
Oh, I think I said enough tonight.
Okay.
I'm good.
Alderman Moran.
I just, I saw the photos of Pride Parade. It looked great. Again, as I said earlier, I noted that I went away for the weekend to Gettysburg and Philadelphia and ran into an impromptu Juneteenth celebration at the same time in Wayne, Pennsylvania. But I saw, you know, pictures of some folks around here and others that I know, and it looked like a very vibrant, fun, very clear day, unlike last year. So, I appreciate those who celebrate and feel the need to support that community. It's great, and if you don't, you don't. That's your own cup of tea, and you're entitled to that as well. Thanks.
Alderman Lopez.
First, I want to comment on the Tree Streets Block Party. It was a very successful event, and I really appreciate the neighbors constantly being supportive of that event, moving their cars, helping organize, helping move stuff when they need to. They did a great job. We had a great time with Atlantic Pro Wrestling, which I understand is starting to set up shop in a couple of other locations in the city and do some other shows, so maybe there's going to be more professional wrestling in the city of Nashville's future. And we had some great performances from local groups like Flow Free Your Die, organized by New Hampshire Underground. Nashville has a really good music scene, but they just need venues and places to perform and opportunities to express, and that's partly why I'm pretty pleased that Great American Downtown is revitalizing itself, because I think it fills a niche that's very much needed. Last Friday, we held the longest day vigil. Thank you to Mayor Donches for a proclamation acknowledging the longest day of the year and dedicating it to people who are in recovery and in the memory of people that we've lost that have struggled in recovery. It's a major issue with the city, and it's too easy to look at how people are inconveniencing you or, you know, disrupting your plans for the night and not necessarily looking at them as people that are struggling themselves, and, you know, addiction is a horrific thing, and it's something that we really need to maintain our focus on addressing. On tomorrow night, from 5:00 to 7:00, I want to make sure I get the time right, sorry. From 5:00 to 7:00 at Boys and Girls Club is Positive Palooza. They're kicking off their summer activities, so I'd encourage any families or patrons, anyone who wants to support the Boys and Girls Club, to participate in that. It's like a summer blastoff. And then on the Fourth of July, it was brought up, what are we all doing on the Fourth? So, Nashville Veterans Promise is organizing a Fourth of July for veterans. A lot of veterans don't necessarily like huge crowds or fireworks, and the city does an amazing job of putting on a great show for everybody, but there's an alternative. If you want to come down to liquid therapy, Veterans Promise is organizing music and free meals for veterans. And then they're also, I know it's probably the wrong day to bring this up, but they're also trying to organize a resource hoodie for the fall, so they're trying to raise money for hoodies that will have, you know, veteran-friendly organizations on the back, but also on the front, a QR code that leads to resources so that veterans can kind of spread the word amongst each other, how to connect with things like VA benefits or housing or those kind of things. So, all of that is through Nashville Veterans Promise, and you can participate from 12:00 to 3:00, I believe, at Liquid Therapy on the Fourth of July.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I've gotten mixed reviews on some of the commentary that I've been doing here for the past few months in this, and somebody said to me, "Well, I like what you're saying, but you're saying anything positive." And I said, "Of course I can say something positive." I said, and so, you know, what I will say is, we, you know, we have a great, great city. Nashville is very blessed to have a rich and diverse city. We saw that at the Pride Parade, although I was unable to attend this year. You know, it looked to be a very, very successful event. And, you know, in addition to that, we had an example of why we're a great community here tonight around this horseshoe. And, you know, we debated things, we talked about issues, we came up with solutions, we accepted things, we rejected things, but I think there was good debate, and there were solutions put on the table tonight, you know, or at least there's some paths forward on some things. And, you know, that's what the community expects, and that's, you know, thankfully, we, as a board, that's what we deliver. And so I think that's something that we can all be proud of. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. It just feels over the past couple of weeks, I've missed everything. I didn't make it out to Pride, I didn't make it out to the Tree Streets Block Party. I know, I'm disappointed in myself too, but an event I did make it out to, which feels worth mentioning, given the discussion we had in the Nashville Public Library tonight, was they had a kickoff event for their summer reading program, which I only knew about because my son insisted that we go. He told me there was a party at the Nashville Public Library. I was like, "Oh, okay." And I don't know how the word got out there, but apparently a lot of other kids throughout Nashville went home and told their parents about the party at the Nashville Public Library. It was packed, which I think is a good sign, given the theme was kicking off summer reading and signing up for the summer reading program, which I'm sure we're already several hours into, given the way this kid reads books. They had live-action, full-size Hungry Hungry Hippos, live-action, full-sized Mario Kart, which, if you know children and their coordination, was a delight of calamity to watch. I didn't participate myself, but, no, it was a very positive thing to see. I saw a lot of community members out there, ran into Commissioner Espidia from the Board of Public Works, and I think it speaks to the programming that our library puts in and to the return on investment that they get, because there's a lot of enthusiasm for reading in the city, which I think is a good thing. So a lot of good stuff going on over the past couple of weeks, but that's what I made it to. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you. So, on behalf of all of the families and the children of families who have immigrated here from Quebec, I want to wish you all a fight to Saint Jean Baptiste, the John the Baptist Day, which is a national holiday in French-speaking Canada. So, have a happy day.
Alderman Tebow.
I thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Alderman Jettie. I'll take that as my ancestors. Thank you. I'll say that in English. I got a couple of things here. So, thanks to Alderman Lopez for the Tree Streets, the work he puts in for the Tree Streets Block Party. I was there for maybe an hour. I had to run to another event in the city, but I was well put on as always, and thanks to Director Hanham, who had our mobile block party vehicle out there, ready to go and used as a stage. I was lucky enough to deliver a letter for Congresswoman Goodlander, and it was a good event, from what I saw, and I'm sure it got better as the day went on. So thank you for all the work you do for that. I know it's important, and it's important to that neighborhood. As far as the parking situation, that was a tough issue today. Ms. Johnson was absolutely correct. You know, I think we used a little bit of hyperbole at times about, you know, emergencies and stuff like that. I think if someone had an emergency and they had to get somewhere, I don't think they'd even think about parking, whether it's the meter or whatnot. So I don't think that's how we should be thinking about that stuff. I put it there, or I voted against it, because I think there's too much going on in that neighborhood right now, and we need to see where everything plays out. I do agree with a lot of the stuff that Alderman Jettie said. I thought he made some good points. We do have to look at how we raise revenue in the city somehow, because we do, because we don't get it many other ways except for property tax. So I think we have to do, look at that in different ways, so. But, you know, that's where my vote was tonight. The library stuff, I'm more worried about that not being really a library. We're looking for a community center there, so let's call it what it's going to be. It's not going to be a library, and that's what Ms. Laflamme had said at the end, that she was more concerned about community center. Well, if that's what we're voting on, that's a lot different to me than a library, so I probably wouldn't support another community center. That's what the library should be half of that, not just a community center, so. Some tragic news that I wanted to really mention, a graduate from North over the weekend, Ian Blake, who was 17, drowned in Lake Winnipesaukee this weekend. I coached him a couple of times throughout his career in baseball. Super friendly, positive kid. You wouldn't get more of a positive kid, and believe me, I'd tell you, the kids weren't positive. He was awesome, the coach. He'd always come up, "Hey, Coach, hey, Coach." Super friendly. His dad was awesome, his mother was great, great family. I just remember, you know, coaching him in one of his first years coaching, and first years he was playing, and he was out in the outfield, and ball came to him, and he caught it, and he couldn't believe he caught it, and he's dancing around, jumping up and down, and I'm yelling, "There's guys on base. The guys are running around the base throwing it in." But he was so happy that, you know, I see him years later, now his hair is long, and he's playing high school ball, and he's playing high school football as well, and, you know, we'd always talk about that moment, because I remember that. And I don't remember everything, and every kid is gone. I've coached 15 years, all these teams throughout each year. It's hard to remember every single moment, but that one, for some reason, always stuck with me, because it was such a funny moment, and he was so proud that he caught that ball, and he turned into a pretty good ball player. He played for North, both baseball and football over his four years there, and it's just, it's tragic for something like that to have to happen, just an accident, you know. So, every, you know, my thoughts go out to the Blake family, and, you know, just with water safety, you know, we're in the summer now, just please be careful out there. And I know Lake Winnipesaukee was having some real rough currents last week with the wind, and I think that's really what kind of added to that. So, on a positive note, and speaking of baseball, my team did win its third straight city championship last week for Babe Ruth, and my son had a great game. All the kids were great, families were great, my assistant coaches, Ethan, Brian, and Bud, awesome guys, they really helped me out, and I appreciate that. As I close my career coaching, I really appreciate all the parents that were good throughout the years, because I can't really bring up a bad time that I've had with parents, so it's tough. It's tough watching kids play and then not getting involved when you're on the sidelines. So it's good that they let me do my thing and let me coach, so. And that's it. Thank you.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to start by wishing my colleague, our Vice President, a happy, early happy anniversary next, tomorrow.
Happy anniversary.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you.
Happy anniversary, a day early, you and your lovely wife.
Yeah, God bless her for putting up with me for 42 years.
You'll be spending it with us tomorrow. I'd also like to say, it seems like we seem to be plagued with the concerts agreeably. Every Tuesday, it's been raining, and today was not raining, but the heat was so bad, they had to reschedule today's concert to September 2nd. So, we've just been, it's been raining, and this one did not go through, so that one will be rescheduled to September 2nd. And this Saturday, there is Family Day in the Park at Sergeant's Park. It's going to be from 11:00 to 2:00. They're going to have free games, activities, free resources from community partners, free haircut vouchers, and Soul Sisters will have a food truck there for people to buy food, and Hazy Ice Cream will be there to, that you can buy some ice cream. It will not be as hot as the past couple of days, but it'll be very nice. And I'd like to take a personal privilege and thank my colleagues here for your kindness. Thank you. Y'all know what that's about. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
I just want to clarify something. When I was talking before about having to pay for the parking lot, paving, and lighting, I wasn't indicating that I thought the residents there should pay for it. I was just saying that none of the divisions have it in their budget, and it probably is going to require a bond if we want to do it this year, so that's the legislation that would have to be sponsored, so. And I voted for this because, as we had in the infrastructure meeting, we had a lot of discussion, and we came to a compromise position, and as I said at the meeting, I look forward to all levels of government coming up with compromises so that we can do what's best for the people and not any one party or any one situation, so that's why I supported that legislation.
So, our legislative manager has identified a meeting date for Resolution 25121, which is the tax cap, which would be next Monday, June 30th. There aren't, I don't think there's anybody that's given her any indication that she'll be on vacation at that, on that date. anybody that's given her any indication that she's on vacation at that, on that date. I know maybe the day after, but June 30th, 7:00, to talk about the tax cap.
Can I just credit our legislative manager for doing that on the fly, because she's amazing?
Trust me, she has all that stuff in a book.
Committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien?
Yes. Tomorrow night, we have infrastructure meeting. This one will be with the Police Department for their training facility. And then Thursday night, we got another one with BPW, and that's going to be on the garage. So, please check your calendars. I don't have the exact times. I think we're compromising times with other committees, because these are joint committee meetings. So...
5:30.
5:30? So, that's tomorrow night, 5:30 with the police commissioners?
5:30.
Okay, 5:30 and 7...
5:30?
5:30 on Thursday?
Correct.
And that's at Public Works Garage?
Public Works.
At the Public Works.
Yeah, and then the new, excuse me, the administrative building, yes, on West Hollis Street. Okay, I think we got that straight.
Other committee announcements. Alderwoman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. The Cultural Connection Meeting is tomorrow at City Hall on the auditorium at 12:00 to 1:00.
Any other committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Thursday, Joint Special, 7:00, National High North.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the June 24th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned by roll call.
Motion is to adjourn. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire?
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and we are adjourned at 9:22. Good meeting tonight. Thanks, everyone.